I would like to call this meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, August 10th. This is a regular board meeting of the school board for the school district of Waukesha. Good evening, everyone, and let's please stand together for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sue, would you please take the roll call?
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Robertson. Kelly Piasik.
Here. And Mrs. Robertson is excused this evening. Thank you, Sue. Can you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do not have bright lights tonight, but we do have some welcomes and recognitions, and so I would welcome Mrs. Sharon Feedy to the podium.
So I am here because I wanted to introduce and welcome some of our new administrators. So, one, two, three, four, I've got five in the house, so if all five of you want to come and stand right here. Okay, so I'm going to start right here with Kent. So Kent is the new principal at Horning. He is a former special education teacher and has experience working with diverse groups of students. He brings strength and avid leadership and has a focus on making Horning School Culture a positive place to learn and grow. The students who met him at Horning during the interview said he was serious but funny and thought he would be a perfect fit for their school, so welcome Kent. Okay, next I've got Laura. So Laura Jnarrow is the principal at Butler. So she is a servant leader who believes in being visible and collaborating with teachers, students, and parents for the best possible outcomes for students. She has high expectations, is a continuous learner, and brings a systems approach to any large project. She has a passion for middle school and is excited to be Butler's next principal. Okay, then I have Elizabeth Gould. So Elizabeth Gould is a bilingual professional with a variety of experience, including a prior time in Waukesha and time in leadership. She is a listener with nonjudgmental approach to problem solving. She is student-centered and focuses on building relationships with students, staff, and families. She's data-driven and brings a positive outlook and high energy to South. As assistant principal at South, I don't know if I said that. That's her position. Okay, next up we have Mark Lenerer. So Mark is the Director of Student Services, and he is a collaborative relational leader. He comes to Waukesha with a vast teaching and administrative experience. He is described as a leader who goes above and beyond for the students and staff that he serves. His approachable and calm demeanor will be an asset in the role of Director of Student Services, and he is also data-driven, organized, and values relationships. And then we have Mr. Carl Anderson. So Carl is the Athletic Director Assistant Principal over at North. So Mr. Anderson brings a calm and open demeanor to North. He prioritizes building relationships with all stakeholders. He values getting the student body and community involved in sports, clubs, and activities, and can't wait to grow the culture and school spirit over at North. So I'd like to take a moment to welcome this. They've all been sturdy and they've all been in there, so I just want to get a name with a face to all these great administrators here in Waukesha. Welcome.
Thank you, Sharon, and welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have seven speakers tonight. Each individual will be limited to three minutes. We will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board and not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please remember to silence your cellphone at this time. Our first speaker tonight will be Kurt Berry.
You know, it's hard to believe that we're 21 days away from school, but it's coming up fast, and I know I'm excited about this school year for a couple reasons. One is the partnership that I'm seeing between the administration and the school board, and another is the governance responsibilities that I'm seeing with the school board, because that is not the case throughout all the school districts and school boards in this region. If we look at Milwaukee, our neighbor, they, the school board over there, had advocated their responsibility to govern and provide oversight with the administrators and the superintendent of the Milwaukee Public School. It's really a dereliction of duty, in my opinion, because they're responsible for approving the administration's decisions, and I'm talking about the COVID mitigation measures and policies. And consequently, since the MPS superintendent and administration have this authority, they are going into the school year, if they go the path that they're going right now, they're going to go into the school year with a mandatory mask policy for their children. So thanks to the school board and the administration for working together, that's one of the reasons I'm looking forward to this school year. Another reason I'm looking forward to the school year is because I'm excited about the KPIs that I'm seeing. Now, I understand that it's a work in progress, but I think we're on the right track with these KPIs. I watched the school board meetings back in October when they were first introduced and some of the subsequent school board meetings, and the comments of, "You've got to be able to recognize the problems and the improvement opportunities and be able to measure them so that you can make progress." I think that really resonated with me, because it's true. I mean, there's always areas that you can improve on. There's continuous improvement, and if we look at the 26 KPIs that are spread out across the four committees that we have here, they're relevant, they're simple to understand, and overall, they're measurable. I mean, a couple of them that I just want to point out. 100% of the schools meet expectations or higher on the DPI report card. That's measurable. ATC composites will be one point above the state average. That's measurable, too. Now, there is an improvement opportunity here, because I'd like to learn the baseline. Like, what are we measuring ourselves again? Like, what is our ACT composite?
Thirty seconds.
Where are we with the DPI report cards? So I think that's an opportunity that we can improve upon. Also, the transparency. I had some difficulty finding this on the website. I think we can improve upon that. I know it's a work in progress. Dr. Seibert talked about it back in October. Let's use this board. Get those visible. Let's get these metrics out there so that we can socialize what we're trying to improve upon, because this is a marathon, not a sprint. It's going to take three years. So, once again, my time is up, but want to say we're on the right track and let's not lose focus. So, thank you.
Your time is up.
Our next speaker is Kathy McBride.
I would like to ask the board's permission if my son could actually speak first and then I go after him.
That will be fine. Yes. So Gabriel McBride.
Good evening, School District of Waukesha, board members. My name is Gabriel McBride. Right next to me is my mom, Kathy McBride, and I was bullied and sexually assaulted out of West Palm Middle School, and the school resource officer put it down as a misorderly conduct, and that makes me a little mad, because why would you put sexual harassment and sexual assault down as a misorderly conduct? So after I went to Horning, I was bullied from kids from West Palm, and they set me up to get beat up at the park. Now recently, from the Waukesha Freeman, Waukesha children with gun arrested. Waukesha, a 12-year-old and a 15-year-old were arrested and booked and referred for charges by the Waukesha Police Department after they were allegedly found possessed with a stolen firearm. According to Police Captain Dan Baumann, the incident occurred around 8:40 PM on Saturday. According to Baumann, the 12-year-old boy started to throw rocks at a house on the 500 block of Scott Avenue. On the 500 block of Scott Avenue was my house.
And you were the...
And I was the 12-year-old that...
Mrs. McBride, this is his time. Thank you.
So, off of Scott Avenue, at one point, the 15-year-old allegedly retrieved the gun, putting it in his waistband, then managed it or showed it, according to the 12-year-old boy. According to the log, the boy told the 12-year-old, "Don't take the gun off safety." A juvenile neighbor and the juveniles' neighbor reported the incident to the police. Officers responded to the scene and interviewed. Police found the kids at Garfield and Hoover Avenues, about one block away from the incident. The 15-year-old boy was alleged, allegedly in possession of a 9-millimeter handgun found to be stolen out of Milwaukee. According to Baumann, the 12-year-old boy was booked and released on disorderly conduct while armed, carrying a concealed weapon and possession of a dangerous weapon by the person under the age of 18.
Thirty seconds.
The 15-year-old was booked and released on carrying a concealed weapon and resisting or possessing a dangerous weapon under the age of 18. Both of the boys are released to their mothers. The police have a high level concern why do they have a 12-year-old and a 15-year-old that have access to a firearm? Baumann said, "Why aren't those parents more interested in the possession of a stolen firearm by a 12- and 15-year-old?" Baumann said, "The department is continuing to investigate the incident."
Your time is up.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Next up is Kathy McBride.
Good evening, board members. I am his mother, but I wanted to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take any of his time. I just wanted to kind of get his point across. He's a bit nervous. We're still healing from this. This happened literally two weeks ago. These two teenagers came to my home, and they put a 9-millimeter loaded gun in my son's face. We have a problem. Just give me a second, and my notes. Of course, when you're, like, ready to do something, everything breaks down. Okay. My son and I went to Waukesha Police Department last week to press the sexual assault charges on the incident from March 29th. While we were there, the student, we also found out that the student resource officer that was assigned to my son's school did not, and still to date, has not reported the sexual assault on my son. Instead, it was coded as a disorderly conduct. We have a serious problem here. The fact that she would lie, this is a police officer. This is someone that you all have put in to be, for us to entrust the safety of our kids six to seven hours a day. This person is in our school, and they're lying on our children. My son gave Waukesha Police the account of what really happened, and I then demanded that they change those charges in the system to reflect the victim and not to pacify the I've also reached out to Waukesha Department of Human Services, Wisconsin Child Protective Services. I am cooperating with Waukesha County Municipal Court. We need to fix this situation immediately. I'm not going away. I meant what I said at my last, the last time I was here. If you cannot keep our kids safe, you will not be in the seats that you are sitting in today. You won't be there next year, because I am going to make sure, first of all, that the safety of these children is at the forefront. And if you all are sitting here and you don't see that there is a bullying problem, I will say it and will continue to say it until you leave. You do not need to be here. Mr. Seibert, I'm waiting for you to call me. I've been calling you since March, when this incident first happened. I called you again three times this week. I'm waiting to hear from you, sir. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Regenette Smith.
Good evening, board members. I'm here on behalf of my granddaughter, a kid just counseling. Here she is. She's not going to speak. Okay. It's going to be kind of hard to adhere to your rules, because my granddaughter went through a lot in school. She went to Waukesha East. Okay, there was a book called Small Great Things. Some people have read it, some people have not. Well, we got an email. The email says, "Dear parents and guardians, second semester, we will be reading a book in class together called Small Great Things by Jody Picote." To sum it up, it follows the courtroom trial of an African-American nurse Ruth, who was on trial for the death of an infant who died under her watch. The newborn was the child of a white supremacist couple who blamed Ruth for the death of the child. It says, "This book brings attention to the reader racism, the justice system, stereotypes, and longing to belong to a group that takes place in the United States." The teacher, Ms. Mitchett, said, "The book brings attention," excuse me, "the book brings attention to reader racism, the justice system, stereotypes, and longing to belong to a group that takes place in the United States." She said, "I read it for first class, first semester." She said, "They truly enjoyed the book." Okay. With that being said, they gave the option that if there were some kids in the room, this was the first email, then in class, before the book was read, she stood up and said, "If there's anyone in here who I may, the book we're going to read may offend certain kids." There's two black kids in the classroom, my granddaughter and her friend. Now, if you feel the need to stand up to 16, 17, and 18-year-olds and say, "There's going to be a book being read," first of all, this email was not on point. This was the sugarcoat, S-H-I-T. Now, if you're going to get up there and say, "Well, you may get offended," okay, well, guess what? She got offended. Now, the words that are in this book is very offensive. Now, I can't say it, but I could say, "Faggots, spics, Asians, Jews, nads, skinheads, KKK members, Nazis, black bitches, and, of course, niggers." She was caught that through her whole class at the end. She told her teachers, the teachers said they was going to help her, they did not. She ended up leaving school three weeks before to graduate. She graduated, because she did not get help. She asked for help. The only time they even acknowledged her is when she started getting ignorant and started rebelling, when they had to call me. The teacher called me out in front of her and told her to call her grandmother to come to school. I did. I had not met with the superintendent, I had not met with any of the teachers, I had not met with anybody, but Mr. Cook, and I met with another lady named Asia somebody or other, she was a black lady, for equality. We don't need to know anything about equality. The school needs to handle this. She left school three weeks because of being...
Your time is up.
...bitten by her teacher. It's disgusting.
The next speaker is Michelle Halaska.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Halaska. I'm glad to be here tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I've been watching the meetings. I haven't been able to come. I do hope that, most of you know that I have a four-year-old, and me and my husband have been, I have three older children that all went through the public school, and they all seem to, two of them turned out fabulously. The third one, she's just taking the long way around, so to speak. And anyway, so, but I'm currently, we just adopted my daughter's daughter, and, you know, we were going to, we were going to send her to, so my oldest, my youngest son was caught at the tail end of COVID, and so it wasn't that big, it was a, it was a big deal, but it wasn't quite that big. He didn't get too weird about it. But with everything that's going on, not only in our community, but in the state, in the country, I don't want my daughter to be exposed to, she's innocent. I don't want her exposed to things that will take the innocence out of her. And I'm grateful for the people that are in, on the board. I'm grateful for the student services. I'm grateful that these really difficult, out-of-control behavior issues with the students and teachers or administration at the schools looking the other way. I don't know what's going on in the schools. We're not really, I don't know that we're really allowed to go into the schools and see what's going on, so everything's hearsay. So we're sending her to the Catholic school, because they don't have these problems there. And I don't think it's right. I pay taxes. I shouldn't have to, I should be able to take, I should be able to take my daughter to church every week like I want, and everybody else can do whatever they want, and then send her to school so she can get an education, not to get taught about what her, what are pronouns, or, you know, what's all these different genders that you can choose from. I don't want that. I don't want her growing up, you know, being segregated from other races. I want her to be included like my other three children were. There were no problems with any, any gender, any race, any, anything. Gender, not anything. So it's sad. I'm really sad that I, I'm, I mean, I'm glad I'm sending her, I have an option to send her, but it makes me sad that I can't send her to the same school that her mother went to, and, you know, so that she has that opportunity to say, "I went to the same school my mom went to," and, you know, had that kind of fun stuff. So, in any case, thank you very much for all your hard work. You've got a big pile of you-know-what in front of you, and you're doing a great job trying to get it sorted out, so thank you very much.
The next speaker is Christine Bowman.
Good evening, everybody. What I'm going to read are actual portions of comments of local teaching professionals, but not necessarily the Waukesha School District. This has to do with behavior and why teachers may leave the profession. Teacher number one, failing to cite the decline in student behavior as one of the reasons teachers are, teachers are leaving the profession means you're missing a huge part of the story. I have 13 years of teaching experience. Student behavior was a growing problem before COVID, and it's only going to get worse as we continue to ignore it. The behavior we have to allow the students to have is not only unsafe to other students and staff, it's disrespectful and disruptive to those who actually want to learn. I would also add that parental behavior is also at a crisis point. Kids coming to school unfed, without proper clothes, parents demeaning and arguing with teachers and administrators in front of their kids, treating the parent-teacher dynamic with a defensiveness and vitriol and is adversarial. Teacher number two, kids have actually come to my school and told me to F-U-C-K off, and then followed it with, "It's my First Amendment, B-I-T-C-H." My mom says I can say whatever I want. Another teacher emphasizes teaching kids consequences and responsibility. The amount of children I've seen have no clue what the, that, what responsibility means is insane. Same with consequences. Another teacher, kids are no different than they were 20 years ago. What is different now is how we are parenting them. Teacher six, this is profound. As teachers, we are and will continue to be passionate about our students, but the behaviors of parents and students is even burning out our most dedicated and talented professionals. Our passion in mental health has limits. And remember, don't allow your kids to do whatever they want. Listen to the teachers and stop trying to argue that your child can do no wrong, because they can do wrong. I had one that was suspended, and I had another one that was almost kicked off the bus. So, yeah, they're not angels. They're, they're not angels, I guarantee it. And finally, just for me, I say, "Parents, if you're not already supporting teachers and administration, step up. Stop blaming others and be part of the solution."
Please stop. Thank you. Last speaker is Rebecca Flaherty.
Before I get into my wish list for you all, I will pause and say thank you for all you've been doing. Many of you have run for school board in the last couple of years, and you get all that love during the race, and then you get the seat at the table, and not a lot of love flowing your way, probably. So, thank you. I'm excited for the school year. Okay, I have two things on my wish list. Number one, can you please set a deadline for the presentation of the results from the library audit? I know they have to finish them first, but we would like to see the results, not just book lists, but an audit. The other, my other item on the wish list is, we, school's starting in legislative court 21 days, and I don't know what my kid's going to be doing two to three hours a week during homeroom. Like, I don't know. Is it SCL? Is it not SCL? Is it clubs? But that's a lot of time that I don't know what my child's being taught. So can you get some communication out to high school parents on what's going to happen in that homeroom, which I think is like 40 minutes a day? Lastly, this is in the wish list, but another thank you. I love that the SROs are here. Like, it makes us feel safe, but I also think it's really good for them to hear what's going on in the schools and how the parents are feeling, so when they're in the schools, they may be able to, like, have a little idea of why teachers are feeling the way their teachers are feeling, or students are feeling the way they're feeling. So I hope that continues, because, like, this is a nice and calm meeting. Some of them last year got a little heated, and I would have liked to have been walked to my car, so thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. Moving into our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the minute approval. We have two sets of minutes for your consideration tonight, one from the July 13 regular board meeting and one from the July 13 executive session. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McCaffrey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Borowski. Any discussion, questions, or changes requested? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Please, I apologize. Wrong meeting. Sue, would you please take the roll call? Thank you.
Take away my job. Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Abstain.
And Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 701. I'm going to have to do some math tonight. Math is awesome. All right, moving on to our communications report. Dr. Seibert, anything?
None to report, Dr. Piasik.
Okay. Thank you. And next would be our WEF report given by Mr. Borowski.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Piasik. So the Waukesha Education Foundation, next board meeting is tomorrow, because last week, Thursday, was their 16th annual golf outing. And it was a great, great golf outing overall. They had a record number of 175 registered golfers, nearly $10,000 in scholarships. We'd like to thank the board members who attended. Unfortunately, I couldn't, I was on vacation, but I know a couple of you have, so if you have comments later, we'd like to hear that. It was a great deal overall. Sunshine, great golf, new venue at Ironwood, and that definitely did not disappoint, and we hope that we'll, or the board hopes that we'll all consider joining us next year. The WEF recognition award nominations are now being reviewed by the awards committee and will be announced in the coming months. The winners will be honored at the Evening for Education event, which, if you don't know already, is February 16, 2023, at the Marriott in Waukesha. Please save that date. We're happy to also share that GE Healthcare has made a $5,000 commitment to be the presenting sponsor for that event. Speaking of sponsorships overall, both the Eaton Corporation and the Educators Credit Union have upgraded from silver, which is a $1,000 sponsorship, to gold, which is $2,500 sponsorship, so that's definitely good news. We've also got some other upgrades. Inio Waukesha upgraded from gold, which is $2,500, to platinum, which is $5,000 sponsorship. Remax Platinum, Kelly, I think it's Selacall, renewed here silver $1,000 sponsorship. GE Healthcare renewed their platinum of $5,000 through October of 2023. And Showus Waukesha West pledged renewal of their silver $1,000 sponsorship. Some other good news, WEF received a couple of other significant investments in July. So one was a 600 So one was a $6,000 investment from the estate of Willow Hornin' directly to the WEF General Endowment Fund. So that investment goes directly to educators and students. There was also a $100,000 investment from the Waukesha South Bands to establish a new Waukesha South Band Fund, which is held at the Waukesha County Community Foundation in the WEF family of funds. So they'll be investing it there instead of just sitting in a checking account. Fund is set up with some dollars donated to the band after the parade tragedy last November. And it sets the band up really for an invested available fund to draw from for programs and projects that directly benefit the band's students. WEF is proud to partner with the band program to ensure the band is supported well into the future. So this should definitely secure long-term viability of Waukesha South Band Fund. A couple of reminders, WEF is celebrating 20 years. I know I've mentioned this in previous board meetings. I want to keep mentioning it. This year is their 20th year anniversary of supporting teachers and students. And again, to celebrate that, they would love to have 20 new sponsors. So again, please help us reach that goal by sharing your contacts or making an introduction if you have any contacts interested in either annual sponsorships or event sponsorships. And once again, to reach WEF or the WEF office, please email Lynette Kalmidge at execdirector@waukeshaeducationfoundation.org, or again, 262-970-1143. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Broowski. I know some of our administrators attended the outing and board members, and it was just an incredibly beautiful day. The weather was great. And I won a hydrangea in the raffle, so I'm super excited about that. Not planted yet, if anybody wants to come help, but it was incredible. And the sponsors are many and generous, and I just love what WEF is doing to support the band with the generous gifts that we had from that perspective, too. So thank you very much. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, would you provide the gifts report?
No gifts tonight.
No gifts. Thank you. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. There were no expulsions this month. I'm sorry, Dr. Seabert. Thank you. Thank you. I apologize for that. Okay. We'll come back to the consent agenda. We have another item under general business for our annual expulsion resolution. And Dr. Seabert, would you like to introduce that to the board, please?
Sure. So every year, in the month of August, the board approves an expulsion resolution. It's statutory in nature. There are essentially two ways that districts can do expulsions. One is an independent hearing officer. Some districts do that. Conversely, what we do here in Waukesha is have a panel of board members serve as the expulsion panel. So being that there's nine of you, generally speaking, in previous years, it's been three rotations of three for thirds of the year, and that has served the district very well. So every August, per statute 120.13 sub 1 sub E, the district then reads this resolution, approves the resolution, and then the board president selects the panel and the terms that you'll serve on the panel.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the resolution? Mr. Como.
Just thank God that we do it this way. I hope it passes. I'm pretty sure it will. Otherwise, we would possibly have nine board members at each hearing or hearing officer. So I think this is the way to go. I think it's served us well in the past, and I hope it will serve us well this year, too.
As a board, we had the fortune about a month or so ago to hear from a former student of the district who went through the expulsion experience and shared with us how important a part of her journey that interaction with the board was. And sometimes we don't always get to hear the positive stories coming back. So I think it really is important that board members are a part of this, but also that we don't have to be sitting here in a group of nine to make those decisions. So. Mr. Como.
And just to be clear, too, each, anytime we do have an expulsion, all nine of us vote on it. It's just we have three people doing the heavy lifting, and the rest of us get to read the report, and then we would vote on it, you know, each month.
Thank you for that. Mr. Montiel.
I was just gonna briefly agree. I know some districts do use a hearing officer. For whatever reasons, that's their choice. I just think it's a, it does a tremendous disservice to our constituents that our students were elected for a reason to have board members there. I think is tremendously important. So I'm very proud. When I look at this resolution, how far back it goes, I misplaced it, but.
1996.
1997, yeah, 1996. So the tradition, I think, is a good one, and I'm glad that it's hopefully gonna continue.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I hope that it continues as well. Like Mr. Montiel said, that some districts only have, like, one hearing officer, and like, that's their choice for whatever reason. And I think that's kind of scary to have, like, our students' fate in one person's hand. Like, that, that can be very, you know, overwhelming. So I think it's a blessing that we have the opportunity to do things differently here where we have different board members who bring different personalities and experiences, who can really empathize with students from different perspectives. And I think that grace and compassion goes a long way. So I hope we continue to do it this way.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'd be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Montiel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any further discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the vote?
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 80. Thank you. Okay, now moving into our consent agenda. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Again, there were no expulsions this month. Policies and bylaws that are included in your consent agenda include: Policy 5113, open enrollment program inter-district; Policy 5215, missing and absent children; Policy 5461, children at risk of not graduating from high school; Policy 8450, control of casual contact communicable diseases; Policy 2240, controversial issues in the classroom; Policy 5460, graduation requirements; Policy 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips; Policies 1421, 3121, and 4121, criminal history record check and employee self-reporting requirements. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Montiel will present the consent agenda for approval tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 11 resignations and 54 new and continuing contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that, excuse me, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 80. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seabert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Tonight, I simply want to encourage all of our stakeholders to enjoy the remaining three weeks that we have of the summer. It's been a beautiful one to date, and there's a lot of time left. So take advantage of it, enjoy it, and we are very excited to open the doors to our schools on Thursday, September 1st. So that's all I have, Dr. Piasik.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move into our committee reports and updates. The first committee on the agenda tonight is the Teaching and Learning Committee, which will be presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. So our last Teaching and Learning Committee was held on Tuesday, August 2nd. And we have two action items and two discussion items on the agenda for this evening. Our first action item is the approval of the Social Studies Resources for Grade 6 to 11. TCI, the resource was recommended for secondary social studies courses in Grade 6 through 8, World History and US History, and the 10th and 11th grade. And on a vote of 5 to 0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved this social studies resource as was presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or discussion about the social studies resource? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call?
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 80.
The second action item this evening is for the approval of the three-year key performance indicators. With our collaborative feedback over the past few months, we are ready for the board to approve the three-year key performance indicators. One change from last month is that we will continue to use the state composite for the ACT and not the national composite as we are evaluating the KPI using all juniors' ACT scores. Again, on a vote of 5 to 0, the TNL Committee approved these three-year performance indicators as presented, and we request board approval, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Montiel. Any questions about the Teaching and Learning Key Performance Indicators? Okay, Sue.
Markell Moore. Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 80.
Our first discussion item, information item this evening, is the AVID Spotlight. AVID stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. It is a research-based K-16 college and career readiness system focused on three critical components of college and career readiness: rigorous academic preparedness, opportunity knowledge, and student agency. Teachers use WICER, which is Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization, and Reading Strategies, to help lift curriculum and engagement across our system. Amanda Wagner, the district's AVID coordinator, presented an overview of the AVID program and its accomplishments to date.
Any questions? Okay.
Our second and final discussion item was the secondary math update. Dan Paczynski, our secondary math coordinator, provided an update on the secondary mathematics course sequence, including first-year data from integrated math. The math department is continuing to move through various phases of the curriculum design process to support the new math course sequence. The vision of the School District of Waukesha is to strengthen the mathematical capacity of students while concurrently providing flexible options for students to pursue mathematic content that aligns closely with their learning and career goals. We will be seeing more math updates from both the middle and high school in the coming months.
Any questions? Okay.
That concludes our Teaching and Learning Report for this evening, and our next meeting will be held Tuesday, September 6th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you.
Our next committee report is from our Ad Hoc Student Services Committee, presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The last Student Services Committee meeting was held on July 19th, 2022. There are four policies approved at the July meeting that were included in the consent agenda this evening. Those policies are Policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program Inter-District; Policy 5215, Missing and Absent Children; Policy 5461, Children at Risk of Not Graduating from High School; and Policy 8450, Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases. The other action item that was on our agenda that evening was the approval of key performance indicators. We reviewed three key performance indicators as they apply to the committee's work. The first KPI pertains to the Student Engagement Hope and Wellness Survey and the responses to the statement, "Students Respect Others Who Are Different." We aim to increase the agree and strongly agree answers from 64% to 85%. We see a level of urgency in raising this percentage in two years rather than the three. Our second KPI involves increasing the return rate of the Parent Climate Survey from 20% to 40% in three years. Lastly, we want to decrease the risk ratio of office behavior referrals of students of color as compared to white peers from the current 4 to 1 ratio to 3 to 1 ratio in three years. And I so move.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Como. Any questions or discussion about student services KPIs? Okay, Sue.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 80.
Thank you. There were three discussion items on the agenda, family engagement update. Patty Havel, Director of Special Education, presented information about the district's program of home visits to facilitate engagement with families. She shared feedback from students, parents, and educators regarding the program. The program consisted of 30 educators in 2021-2022 school year and will expand with 40 additional educators in the 2022-2023 school year. Any questions on that program?
Mr. Como.
As I recall, I think we started that with grant money. Is that correct? Are we continuing to receive grant money on that, or are we absorbing that into the general fund budget?
The grant money hasn't been expended. Yeah.
I believe that's true, too.
Yes. So we're covering the class. The district is covering the class as a whole.
Okay.
Anything else? All righty. Our second item, discussion information item, was school nursing report.
Joe Cook shared information about the work of the three district nurses and the healthroom staff in 2021-2022 school year. We also have students that require one-on-one nursing and will hire for those positions as needed. We had 90,000 healthroom visits this year, ranging from managed care, such as diabetes and medication distribution, to daily issues such as headaches and feeling unwell. Our nurses and aides do a fantastic job caring for our children. Any questions on that item? All right, moving on to our third discussion information item was the 2021-2022 School Safety Drills Update. Joe Cook presented the Fire Tornado and Safety Drills Report for 2021-2022 school year. Each school is required to perform a fire drill monthly, and two weather drills and two safety drills are also required per school year. In the month of September, we conduct four drills at each school to get the year off to a good start and explain the procedures to the students and families. We perform multiple safety drills throughout the year, exceeding the state requirements for the school year. More information about safety will be presented in our August meeting. Discussion questions? All righty. The Student Services Committee will meet next Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom. And Madam President, this completes the Student Services Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. All right, next on the agenda is the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, which will be updated by Mr. Montiel tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Human Resources and Compensation Committee met earlier today at 6:15 in the adjacent room across the hall. We had three items on, I'm sorry, one, two, three items on the consent agenda, which passed earlier this evening, and we have three action items to present tonight. First action item is the approval of a recommended candidate and the contract for the position of the principal of Waukesha North High School. The administration is recommending Thomas Shalmo for the position of principal of Waukesha North High School. Mr. Shalmo has been a high school principal since 2014 at two charter schools in Milwaukee. He is a data-driven leader who is a focus on academic results. Mr. Shalmo models a positive school culture and values stakeholder input. He values both student and teacher leadership and voice, and he's highly relational. Mr. Shalmo is currently the principal of Milwaukee Academy of Science. He has been the principal, dean of students, and teacher at Hope Christian, excuse me, high school, and was a teacher leadership development manager for Teach for America. Additionally, he has taught middle school at Mesmer and MPS. Thomas received his endorsement for principal license from Concordia University, his master's in education, education policy, and leadership from Arkansas. in education, education policy and leadership from Arquette, and his BA in journalism from UW-Madison. Mr. Shalmo's resume and contract provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Madam President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract for Mr. Thomas Shalmo for the position of principal of Waukesha North High School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, Sue.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Thank you. The second action item tonight is seeking the approval of a recommended candidate for the contract of the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. The administration is recommending Brian Groschek for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. Brian Groschek excels at communicating with all stakeholders. He is a student-centered reflective listener who has experience with safety protocols, curriculum design, and coaching in teaching. He took on several leadership roles in his current school and is excited to join the South team, very excited. Mr. Groschek is currently a secondary social studies educator at Union Grove Union High School and a student teaching mentor at UW-Parkside. He received his master's degree in administrative leadership from UW-Milwaukee and his bachelor's of arts in history and secondary education from Lakeland College. Mr. Groschek's resume and contract provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. Madam President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Brian Groschek for the position of Assistant Principal of Waukesha South High School.
Thank you, Mr. Montiel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Thank you. The third and final action item tonight is the approval of key performance indicators. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee met, as mentioned, and we approved the following key performance indicators. A list was placed in your desk this evening. Staff climate survey. The district will see a 5% increase each year over the next, excuse me, staff climate survey. The district will see a 5% increase year-over-year, where staff will score the district a seven or above on the following question. On a scale of zero to 10, how likely are you to recommend the district as a place of employment? The current baseline is 40.7%. New church, new teacher survey. 80% of respondents will select, quote, "very helpful," close quotes, on the following question. How helpful has your mentor been with your transition into the school district of Waukesha? The current baseline is 52.6%. Teacher attendance rate. Teacher attendance rate as a district will be 95% or higher. Retention rate. Teacher retention rate will be 92% or higher. Madam President, I move to approve the key performance indicators as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Montiel.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Como. Any questions? Mr. Borowski.
Yes, thank you. I believe the information we were just given tonight was slightly different for the staff climate survey. So, was that changed?
That's correct. What Mr. Montiel read were the KPIs that were approved at the HR committee meeting prior to the board meeting.
Gotcha, okay. So, that was 5% year-over-year. Is it until 80% reached, or is that the way it's worded?
If you'd like to reiterate that, Mr. Montiel, or I can clarify. It's 5% each year for three years.
Okay.
With a goal of, with a top end goal of 80%.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I like the fact that it shows the yearly increase. I notice it does not show that, or is not written that way for the new teacher survey. Is there any reason, maybe in one KPI, you're doing it that way and the other you're not?
We had, I chaired that meeting tonight, so I'll just clarify. We had some discussion about the completeness of the baseline data and that it may not represent all teachers who are responding to their mentor experiences, and so, one of the things, I don't want to speak for Ms. Thede, but we talked about improving the accuracy and completeness of that data and then moving toward that top line goal. Mr. Montiel.
Yeah, my recollection is, I think the representative sample was like 20-something people, so we didn't feel confident that that sample was representative of the whole. So, we'd like to get, at least my sense was, get a sense of where we're at and then go from there.
Mr. Moore.
I just, thank you, Madam President. I just had a comment, a positive one, to the Human Resource Committee. I was able to sit in their meeting today, and I thought they did a fabulous job, but I was also able to meet with Ms. Sharon Thede, and just wanted to just recognize her for the amazing work that she is doing in human resources and the support and resources she's giving the staff to make sure that, you know, they increase the retention. So, so many resources that she shared with me when I met with her, and I just think that is a positive way to increase the retention and keep our district moving forward. So, thank you to the Human Resources Committee and Ms. Sharon Thede as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other questions about the KPIs? Okay, we have a motion seconded, correct? Okay, Sue, go ahead.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
There are no discussion or information items. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montiel. We held a place on the agenda for the Policy Committee. I believe there are no updates this evening. Do you have anything to share?
No, the Policy Committee doesn't meet monthly. There's been a change, which I think is, we spoke about at length before. Our next Policy Committee has yet to be set. We await some updates from Neil, I believe.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Finance and Facilities Committee update presented by Mr. Como.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Tonight, we have three action items for your consideration, three discussion slash information items. The first action item is the approval of the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Project Plan. The committee discussed Phase One Design and Engineering RFP results. RTM Engineering came in with the strongest proposal at $179,434. The estimated cost of the current Phase One scope of work is between $5.5 and $6 million. Based on the final design, the administration will complete another RFP to determine the final scope and budget amounts for the installation. At that point, the board will be asked to approve the final budget and funding for Phase One. The committee approved the contract with RTM and the use of ESSER funding at the estimated cost of $179,434, and I so move.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Sue, please take the roll call. Thank you.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Mr. Como.
Our second action item tonight is the approval of the 2022-2023 Preliminary Budget and Tax Levy. The committee was presented a preliminary budget for publication totaling $201,68,276 in revenue and $204,2524 in expenditures. Included in the motion is a preliminary tax levy of $84,587,776, which is a 3.99% drop from the previous year. The budget adoption is on page one, and the tax levy summary is on page two of the budget booklet that was provided in board docs. We did get a physical one, too, at FNF for your review. With the approval of the board tonight, the preliminary budget will be presented to the public at the budget hearing on September 14th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. The final 2022-2023 and tax levy will be approved in October. The committee approved the 2022-2023 preliminary budget and tax levy for publication, and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions or comments? Mr. Como.
It takes a long time to develop this document. We still have some very key information, as Mr. Clark had reviewed with our committee at our last FNF meeting on Monday. We have our third Friday enrollment count. We have our final honor tax valuation coming in, equalized tax evaluation, and a couple of the things that we still don't have, but we'll get those things pretty much squared away in the beginning part of October, so that we'll be able to finalize everything for presentation at the end of October.
Thank you. All right, Sue, please take the vote.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Darren and his team for putting in the hard work as they always do each and every year, and the precision actually is pretty darn good, I think. It's been proven, proven many, many years over and over, so hopefully Darren will, will have another good one for this year, so, not to put any expectations on him. The third item is the approval of our key performance indicators. There was no action taken. We do have this agendized for continued discussion and hopefully approval at our next Finance and Facilities meeting in September, so we'll just keep working on those, and hopefully we'll wrap them up soon. I do have three discussion information items. The first one is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures are within budget limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as A referendum debt report was given. Michelle Weiberg from PMA Financial was presented to, oh, was present to discuss the referendum debt and our defeasance plan. The 2022-2023 preliminary budget includes a $5.2 million defeasance, which is roughly the same amount as has been approved the past two years. Continuing the current rate of principal, continuing the current rate of principal will allow for the total interest savings of $1,736,000 and keeps the district on pace for the payoff of the November 2018 referendum approved debt in six years. Just to put that in perspective, many districts would take 20 years to pay off this type of referendum. We set a goal of no more than 10, and we're on a pace for six, and that does result in true savings to our constituents. And I shared that $1.7 million, and that could be more than that as we move through this, so I feel pretty good about where we're at with that.
Mr. Montiel.
I was hoping Mr. Como would point that out, because this is such an easy thing to just kind of mention what is happening and kind of move over it. It is such a tremendously important thing that the FNF has done and the board has done, the defeasance and the timeline, backing it off from what we projected, getting it in sooner. From my time with you on, or when you chaired the FNF committee, I know that you know this tremendously well, so I'm glad you spoke up and gave a little more details about that. I just want to, I think, to constantly remind our constituents is a good thing on this, because it saved a tremendous amount of money. It saved a lot of time, and it was a job well done with your committee and yourself in the district.
Mr. Como.
Well, you know, our constituents trust us to try and make these, these good decisions. They're not always easy decisions to make. We have to balance many things out with them, and the true thanks really goes to the constituents, right? This is referendum money that they approved at a 66% approval rate, and it's up to us to spend it well and to do our best to help out this community.
Any more questions? Mr. Clark.
I just wanted to make it clear to everybody who might be watching or listening, this will be the fourth levy of the sixth. You know, it is in six years from today. It's in fall, and then two more October, so October of '25 will be our last levy for this, that just so everyone realizes we're very close to reaching that goal.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the third item is the Richardson lease of our Pleasant Hill school site. Our Pleasant Hill site has been leased by Richardson School for the past seven years, and the current lease is set to expire in June of 2023. Richardson is interested in discussing a new lease, and this was agendized to gauge the interest in pursuing a new lease, which the committee did agree to consider. There's a discussion item, so.
Any questions? I don't see any. Mr. Como.
You know, they've been a great tenant. They provide wonderful services. We even subscribe to their services, and we do get a discount of their services. They've been a great, a great tenant, great partner, and hopefully we can figure something out. The only thing that I think we mentioned at the committee level is that we need to have some flexibility in possibly, you know, getting out of any contract, and we build that into all of our contracts, but we need to balance that with a, they need a certain period of time also. We can't just have it be terminated instantly because we had something come up. We need to balance those two things out, so hopefully, as we move forward, we can come to some agreement on some of those things.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mrs. President.
Thank you, Mr. Como. All right, we're now moving on to the other business portion of our agenda. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Okay, seeing none. We do have a need to move to executive session tonight, so I will be looking for someone to read the motion. Mr. Montiel.
Sure. I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of deliberate, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, sale of district properties. Adjourn, one motion for each, or one motion on both?
Both.
Both. Continuing on. Adjourn to closed session to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to discuss matters relating to the well-being of individual students and the district's response to concerns regarding the same subsection 19.85 Sub 1 Sub F with stats.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Sue, please take the roll call.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.[1790.01]